Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, January 9th, 2023. It is 7:08 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Um, all members of council are present. The following council members are here remotely. Terry Rooney, Kevin Reed, and Jessica Petuska. All other members of town council are here in town council chambers. I'm going to pass the consent calendar as presented. If there is no objection. There ain't no objection, then passing consent calendar as presented. Item four, communication. I ask that communication items A through eight incorporate into our meeting. Item five, public participation. Uh, is there any member of the public that would like to participate? I'll begin with those in the room.
Can I just say it's difficult to hear you?
Sure, I could speak up a little bit. Is there any member of the public that would like to participate?
I don't know what you're talking about at the moment.
Sure, no, no problem. So in our town council meeting, individuals have an opportunity from the community to participate.
Okay.
Uh, so this is the time to do that. And what I would ask, if you would like to participate, come down, name an address, and um, just the microphone. No problem, sir.
373 Spring Hill Road. The reason that we're here is that we have an issue with, is an um, an incursion upon our property that you guys are, well, not you guys, but someone in the, in, in the Monroe community is trying to surpass our road or our surp- it's, oh, I don't know if y'all know, Spring Hill Road, they want to eliminate, you know, the circle, the round, not around us, basically a dead end road. But we're at the end of that road. And we're trying to figure out how it is that we get, we're basically gonna lose some of our land if that happens. So we're trying to figure out how that gets reconciled. And we don't know the answer to that. And that's why we're here, because we thought that we were gonna talk about that.
So uh, just for your information.
Sure.
Okay. Um, if you, you can pose any questions you can. I cannot guarantee those questions will be answered. This opportu- this is an opportunity for you to speak on an issue. And you're speaking on an issue that's going to be before us later this evening.
Okay.
So. Oh, no, 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 this is your time to speak. That's what I'm trying to tell you.
I have an agenda, so I was just curious.
Sure, it is um, so the, the item you're speaking about is on the agenda. So this is going to be your only time to speak on the issue?
And we're not necessarily against it. I'm just trying to figure out what the heck is going on.
Okay, um. So any, any questions you or anyone else has, you can, you can ask them now. But um.
No, I'll wait.
You shouldn't, you shouldn't, no, 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 this is the only opportunity you'll have.
I'll vote for it.
Right. Go for the vote, so yeah.
I'll make it very concise. Um, so when you choose, if you choose to allow that to happen, some of the land that belongs to 373 Road, Hill Hill Road, will actually disappear. And how do they get compensated for that? Or we get compensated for that? How does that happen?
Compensate?
Yeah, because ultimately, we're losing land, right? Or no?
Oh, no, 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 I, I'm just kidding. If there's anything else you'd like to say.
Right, so I know that that's the actual truth. And there's no guarantee that there's any sort of, you know, plowing or taking care of the road, whatever road is left. If there is, oh, this, heck, we won't be in road at all, right? So, I mean, where, where do we stand? Like, what do we do with that? Like, I'm not sure.
Mr. Chair, do you mind if I ask one question?
I prefer not to get into a back and forth.
Not really, a, a simple, it's really just a simple question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to make sure I understand what you're asking. Uh, I want a clarification as to, uh, when you say that you'll lose land, are you talking about just the road? Are you claiming that somehow the discontinuance of the road will actually make you lose a portion of your property? And if you could explain that? Could you explain that?
Yes, because as, as far as the plans that I've seen are that the road or the driveway now, a proposed driveway, will actually cut through our land. So there will be this, this proportion of land that is gone. Just gone. So I'm not sure how that works. I would love for somebody to tell me how that works.
What street number is it again?
373 Spring Hill.
373, okay.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. All right, is, is there anyone else that would like to speak during public participation? All right, is there anyone online that would like to participate at this time? Please remember to unmute yourself. Hearing none, I'm going to close public particip- Uh, we have no appointments this evening. Action items. Item A, Town Council Command Finance, Education, Health, Public Safety Matters. Madam Vice Chair.
We've not been met since our last meeting.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Uh, Town Council Command Planing, Zoning, Public Works, and Parking Recreation Matters, uh, Council Member Rooney.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have not met since last council.
Thank you. I believe Parks and Rec is meeting this evening. Yes. All right. Uh, Town Council Command Legislative and Administrative Matters, uh, Mr. Reed.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. You can hear me all right?
Yes.
Great. Um, we did meet tonight. We discussed um, four resolutions, three of which will be in front of you. The proposed discontinuance of a portion of Spring Hill, uh, revisions to the chief sanitarian job description, and the 2022 steep grant award. We also discussed a letter of agreement with the Clear Vision Agency.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Uh, Strategic Planning Committee, uh, we will meet in January to discuss capital projects before the first election presents its budget in February. EMS Building Committee, uh, Mr. Rooney. No, no data.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are meeting tomorrow night. Um, everything is the same as last report. Just finishing up the siding, epoxy floors in the spring, garage doors between now and then. At this point, that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Uh, Open Space Preservation and Acquisition Committee, uh, Ms. Rorock.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have not met since our last meeting.
Thank you. And Mr. First Electionman, your update.
Thank you. Um, written on the way down. So just a handful of things quickly. One is um, our new website is live@monroct.gov. It is now a .gov site, um, as well as um, all of our email addresses that were formerly .org, um, including um, all of you on council. Your, your email is now um, whatever it was, .org, now .gov. Uh, anything on the old .org will continue to migrate over, so no worries. You don't have to, you know, if someone mails you the old email address, it'll still get to you. But um, the new website is up and uh, obviously we're always, you know, finding a couple little things here and there that uh, didn't migrate over correctly. But um, those have been few and far between. So uh, I'm, I'm really pleased with all the work that uh, our technology department did um, in getting that going. Just to note that the annual Christmas tree pickups will be done by the Public Works Department, starting January 13th uh, through the 27th. Um, there are no appointments. You simply leave it at, at the curb line. Um, and uh, they can also be brought at the Garter Road landfill during its normal hours. The cell on wheels, uh, that was previously in front of Fawn Hollow School has been removed uh, by ATT now that the ARX cell tower project is live. The state of Connecticut will be making um, some upgrades to traffic signals on Route 25, just a handful, not even a handful, a few. Um, on Route 25, I'm sorry, at Pepper Street and Corporate Drive, uh, and also at Victoria Drive, and then Monroe Turnpike at the Stop and Shop and Rita Center intersection. Um, really, all this will involve is stopping the nighttime flashing operation, and they're gonna be installing enhanced um, vehicle detection so that the lights will cycle when only when necessary at nighttime hours. So from an operational standpoint, it's pretty, uh, pretty transparent. But you know, folks see work being done by the state on those intersections. Um, that's what it's all about. Um, and I don't know exactly when that work is scheduled. It is, we are, we are only but three amongst a much larger list throughout our region. So um, when they will get to these, I don't have a date, but it could be anytime after January 14th. And last but not least, a couple of business updates. We have a ribbon cutting uh, scheduled for the 18th uh, for dental associates at 501 Main Street. And we have um, in the former location of Carl Anthony's, we have Marcelo's Italian Eatery, which will be opening later this month. That is all I got.
Thank you, Mr. First Electionman. All right. We have no other action items. We have no matters of unfinished business this evening. I believe our guest of honor is here.
No, I believe that they were unable to make it uh, this evening out, as it turned out. So we'll ask that you hold this until another meeting.
All right, so we'll try to do this on a different date. Um, so we will skip over item A if there are no objections. There ain't no objections, I'm gonna skip over item A. Um, item B, acceptance of the following donations that individually exceed $1,500. Item I, $5,000 from uh, Carolyn Giampi? For the food pantry. I have a motion to accept the donation of $5,000 from Carolyn Giampi for the food pantry.
So moved.
Vice Chair LePelos is there, second. I do need Martin. Uh, Mr. Kellogg.
Uh, thank you. I would just merely uh, extend our gratitude for a very generous donation uh, for a, obviously a program that is very important to uh, some of our families here in Monroe. So uh, thanks, thanks to her for that generous donation.
Any other discussion? And now I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor of accepting $5,000 donation for Carolyn Giampi for the food pan- pantry, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, as fast as 9 to 0. All right. Resolution item, uh, excuse me, new business. Item C, Resolution 23 dash 001. Uh, Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the town council adopt Resolution 23 dash 001. Resolved, and accordance with Connecticut General Statutes 13A dash 49, et cec, the town of Monroe hereby discontinues the portion of Spring Hill Road commencing at the intersection between lots 365 Spring Hill Road and 255 Monroe Turnpike, and continuing along the frontage of lots 373 and 375 Spring Hill Road and 255 Monroe Turnpike, and terminating at Monroe Turnpike slash Route 111. And being it further resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, the first election is authorized to A, provide written notice by certified mail, return received requests of such discontinuance to the, to the same persons to whom notice was sent pursuant to Town Council Resolution 22 dash 94. And B, after such written notice is sent, course to be recorded on the land records of the town, a notice of such discontinuance, which notice shall include A, a listing of each parcel of property for which notice was sent pursuant to Town Council Resolution uh, 22 dash 94; B, in the name of the owner of each such parcel of property as shown in the last completed grant list of the town; and C, the current assessor's map, block, and lot number for each such parcel.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second? I will second it. I heard somebody. Who's that? Huh? I said I heard somebody say second. That's. Someone wrote for there, I believe. Um, okay. Uh, Mr. Kellogg.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So uh, as you know, in the uh, November 7th meeting, uh, the council uh, through Resolution uh, 2294, uh, directed that we proceed with the statutory requirements that are necessary prior to the council's final consideration for discontinuation of a roadway. Um, that was uh, done on December 6th of 2022. Um, I have in your packet uh, the GIS map that identifies four abutting property owners uh, to that, to that area, road, the section of the roadway that would be considered for discontinuance, uh, as well as uh, the P&amp;Z report confirming those abutting properties, the assessor's report showing the owner addresses as reflected on the last completed grant list, which is what the statute requires, uh, the copies of notices and the certificates that were mailed to those uh, property owners on December 6th, and then uh, the final uh, uh, proof and photographs of the required signage posted on December 6th, 2020, uh, 2022, sorry, that's a typo, uh, at both ends of the roadway. Uh, so it is ripe for consideration. Uh, I have a certificate of discontinuance that is prepared. Should council wish to move forward, that I will need um, signed at that time. Um, other than that, uh, all the statutory requirements have been um, conducted. I would like to uh, defer briefly to Attorney Vincent Marino, who provided his opinion to you back uh, in the November 7th meeting, um, just for any additional items he may have. Um, one thing I would like him to address is the concerns that were raised in the public participation portion. Um, whereas my, my understanding is that um, in discontinuance of a roadway, there is no land taking whatsoever. In fact, uh, one half, the midline of the roadway to the property owner is actually given by the town to the property owner. Um, there may be other things that are going on kind of behind the scenes from what the town is aware of uh, with all the property owners in that area, um, which is really their own, a private matter to kind of negotiate if they want to take that property and then do something with that in terms of all the property owners. But um, I'd like Attorney Marino to really address that further.
Yes, thank you, Mr. First Electionman. Uh, and you are absolutely correct. As a matter of process and matter of law, with respect to the discontinuance of the roadway, uh, each adjoining uh, property owner that abuts the discontinued road will become the owner to the midpoint of the abandon, of the discontinued roadway. So in fact, the abutters do not lose uh, property, they gain property uh, to the midpoint of the road. So uh, I, I do not know what the gentleman was uh, uh, what the concerns were uh, that he raised. Uh, it might be a matter of private concern, uh, and he should raise that with his uh, neighbors. Uh, but that's not a matter of municipal concern. With respect to the uh, discontinuance of the roadway, it is specific that if this council were, votes to discontinue, the abutters will actually be gaining property. They will not be losing property.
Okay.
Thank you, Attorney Marino. And um, you also had confirmed in a prior uh, conversation that um, that in, in no way would a property owner lose the ability to access their property by, that that is not, that would not be permitted in any kind of uh.
That, that is correct. By statute, uh, the statute that was adopted by the state of Connecticut in uh, I believe it was 1956, as a matter of law, any property owner that currently abuts a discontinued road will continue to have an easement as a matter of law to continue to pass and repass for access purposes to their property.
Thank you.
Over the discontinued roadway.
Thank you, uh, Attorney Marino. So you know, my, my only other comment would be that perhaps there have been some proposals um, by the developers as to how to reconfigure, reconfigure maybe some of the abandoned or discontinued portion of the roadway. Uh, but that would be um, not something that um, I've certainly been made aware of in terms of what, what they're proposing, what they want to, what they want to do. But certainly no one is, no one is obligated to do that.
The, the individual property owner that has frontage with the road receives
Yes.
up until the midpoint of their.
The midpoint of the roadway being discontinued, yes.
That's correct.
Their entire frontage basically gets extended to that midpoint of the roadway.
And, and in fact, they're, they get an easement from the closest point to the, the nearest public right of way to their property line for purposes of right of access.
Any questions from town council?
I just have a, does, if, if the town is abandoning this road in a technical term, then do they do snow plowing of that?
No. It basically becomes a private access road.
So the homeowners then would have to arrange for their own snow removal?
Correct.
No. That was not what we agreed to. It's not. She agreed to remove the snow, period.
Hi, sir.
Sorry, but it's just not true.
Any other questions from town council? Any other discussion from town council?
Again, there can, may have been agreements that the town was not a party to as relates to those, those matters.
But again, once we abandon the road or discontinue the road, the property owners then own up until the middle midpoint.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
If there's no other discussion, I'm gonna call for a vote. Um, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 23 dash 001, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, as fast as 9 to 0.
Aye.
I would just like to offer to uh, the gentleman to feel free to contact um, our, our town planner or my office tomorrow. We'd be happy to facilitate any conversations that are necessary.
I appreciate that.
You're very welcome.
I really do. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right. Item D, Resolution 23 dash 002, the Concern Act on a Resolution Regarding Divisions to Chief Sanitarian Job Description. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the town council adopt Resolution 002. Resolved that the town council hereby approves the revised job description for chief sanitarian in the health department to be effective immediately.
All right, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. That was a motion to adopt Resolution 23 dash 002. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jason Mauer. Uh, Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so first of all, I want to, I know you met her virtually at the last meeting, but I wanted you to introduce you in person to Amy Lahaney, our new director of health. Um, one of the things that uh, Amy has been looking at is our staffing. Uh, the town of Monroe is not uh, is, is, is not unique in that we have uh, challenges in finding uh, properly credentialed public health personnel. Um, it is a dynamic that's occurring throughout the state for a variety of reasons. Um, one of the positions that we have open is that of chief sanitarian. And one of the challenges that um, Ms. Lahaney has identified is our requirement, the town's requirement, that the individual have a master's in public health. Um, that is, the, the only reason why we have that in there is to um, is to have this position, uh, have the proper credentials to be an acting director of health in the absence of our health director. Um, that is something that we actually uh, did want um, in prior years. Uh, but given the challenges in, in finding uh, folks that are, that have that qualification, uh, we'd like to drop that and instead uh, allow for a greater amount of experience, where it's going from three to five years. Um, as for an acting director of health is concerned, uh, we would simply uh, rely upon the longstanding practice that occurs throughout the state, which is to utilize mutual aid where another health director in another community um, is authorized to take any actions that may be required when the health director is uh, is unavailable.
Thank you.
Um, it is something that we've done for many, many years. We continue to do so. In fact, um, we are working to kind of memorialize that with an updated MOU in that regard, but nothing would preclude us from doing it um, immediately if necessary. Um, and the other changes she's recommended is to um, uh, change some of the um, the uh, septic and lead certifications, as you can see there. So other than that, um, it's obviously been reviewed by our HR director as well. I'm happy to let Amy discuss it further or answer any questions you may have. But I think it's fairly straightforward and would allow us to um, I think will be, allow us to move forward on this position a lot faster.
Any other discussion? Would our health director like to say anything? You don't have to.
I'm good.
Because of. Okay. All right. Any uh, questions or comments? Hearing none, I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 23 dash 002, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, as fast as 9 to 0. Item E, uh, Resolution 23 dash 003. Uh, we will be not considering this item. This item was not voted out of LNA this evening. Uh, the first election has asked that we pass over this item this evening as another uh, vendor for this contract will be considered through the appropriate channels. Yeah? All right, so we're gonna skip item E. Um, item F, Resolution uh, 23 dash 004. Uh, I move that the town council uh, waive the reading of Resolution 23 dash 004. Is there a second?
The practice second.
Second by Mr. Mauer. Any, I, I would like to save the vice chair's voice this evening. It's done, as Mr. Mauer said, it's on the border of being too long to read. So is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of waiving the reading of Resolution 23 dash 004, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, as fast as 9 to 0. All right. I, I move that the town council adopt Resolution 23 dash 00. Is there a second?
Second.
Taken by Donalyn Wales. Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as I reported previously, the state of Connecticut uh, approved our application for a half a million dollar steep grant uh, for the purpose of reconstructing Old Zora Road. Uh, the state has designated their department of transportation to administer the grant. They require uh, that the municipality provide an authorizing resolution before they will provide the agreement to the town for re, for review and execution. Um, despite that, um, in the spirit of our charter, I will uh, certainly bring uh, the agreement onto your communications uh, at a subsequent meeting before I execute it, provided that you of course pass this resolution authorizing me to execute it. Um, it has been reviewed, uh, the, the attached resolution has been reviewed by Attorney Lido. And um, again, I ask that you pass this so we can move the process forward.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Any other discussions?
Chair?
Yeah, Mr. Mauer.
I just ask that the resolution in its entirety be incorporated into the minutes.
It shall be. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 23 dash 004, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, as fast as 9 to 0. Okay, um, so I see.
I think Frank just.
He's joined. Is here. Okay, so uh, I'm gonna ask the first election. We gotta come in and out of executive session twice or one?
Uh, I believe, but I'll ask the town attorney to chime in if he thinks otherwise. I believe if you vote to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation and invite myself, uh, the town attorney, and the assessor solely for the first portion in regards to Resolution 23 005, um, that that would be okay.
That's correct. That's correct. You have to do it, Tim.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion to enter executive session inviting Ken Kellogg, Frank Lido, and Justin Feldman in order to discuss pending litigation, specifically Resolution 23 dash 005.
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair LePelos is there, second. Second by Donalyn Wales. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay.
Jason?
Hearing no nays, passes 9 to 0.
Do you want to take Bill's stuff out? Do you want to take Bill's stuff out, Jim?
All right, uh, it is 7:38. Good evening, everyone, it is 7:44 PM. We were in executive session discussing, uh, litigation related to, on the item of the agenda, Resolution 23 dash 005. Uh, we are back on the record. All right, can I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss?
Do we have to vote on the other?
You, you can stay there.
You want to just vote on this one now?
Yeah, that's what we're going to do. All right, so can I have a motion to enter executive session inviting the first electman and town attorney to discuss litigation resolving Resolution 23 dash 006? Their motion.
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Lapalas is there second?
Second.
Taken by, uh, J.D. Martin. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
All those against, please...
I can exit the session.
Hearing no nays, as fast as nine to zero, it's 7:45 PM. All right, good evening, everyone, we have exited executive session regarding Resolution 23 dash 006 at 8:00 PM, we are back on the record. And no votes were taken during the session. Uh, I make a motion to adopt, Town Council adopt Resolution 23 dash 005, resolved that town attorney and first electman are authorized to settle pending litigation and execute a settlement on behalf of the town regarding the tax appeal for the property located at 417th Street. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Vice Chair Lapalas. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, as fast as nine to zero. Item two, I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 23 dash 006, resolved that town attorney and first electman are authorized to settle pending litigation enters into a settlement agreement on behalf of the town regarding legal matters relative to the real property located at 86 High Rock Road. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Lapalas. Any discussion? Chair? Uh, just want to thank our town attorney, our selectman, uh, our team here in Monroe for resolving a long-going, uh, a long past due litigation that's kind of been sitting on the books. So I'm glad we were able to come to amicable resolution.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 23 dash 006, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, as fast as nine to zero, public participation. Um, if there's any member of the public that would like to discuss the recognition of Ellie Menendez as the 2023 Kid Governor, or Resolution 23 dash 003, please come to the podium. Anyone online?
For another night.
Hearing none, I'm going to close public participation for the evening. I'm adjourned this meeting at 8:02 PM.